Alright, so we had a motion to come out of executive session at seven twelve. That was a motion by Glenn, second by Jay. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Amendments to the agenda? Are there any amendments needed?
I have one.
Yep?
Rutland Regional Planning is looking for a letter of support to get the Adam Street Bridge funding and replacement. We just need to sign a letter.
So add a new business?
Yes, please.
Chris?
Yep?
Health Officer, Executive Session. For legal, Joe?
It's from the town to Rutland Region.
Any other changes, amendments? Okay, is there a motion to amend those? To add those?
Don't move, both of them.
Yep, second.
Motion by Bob, second by Glenn to amend the agenda as previously mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from April fifth.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Jay, second by Glenn to approve the minutes from April fifth. Are there corrections or changes needed? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five minutes for public comment. Anybody for public comment? Yep? Go ahead.
Hi, so I think most of the people are knowing I'm Deborah Lacono. And after the last select board meeting, I felt I wanted to just make some comments as a Fairhaven resident and voter about the issues that were raised by the town clerk. So my understanding is, you know, in the annual report, the proposed budget for the town clerk's salary was thirty-seven thousand. And so I understood why you would say, look, you know what you were going to be paid, we need a ramp for the office. But if she was being offered thirty-seven thousand, like being told that she wouldn't get a raise, that she'd get thirty-seven thousand for three years, I don't believe that most Fairhaven voters would assume, just because the proposed budget for this year was thirty-seven thousand, that she wouldn't get a raise. If you look, you know, I can look back at the previous town, you know, annual reports and see that most of the full-time employees of this town do get regular raises. In the state of Vermont, in the municipality, in this country, you know, civil servants get raises. They also get benefits. I thought, I don't know how the number of thirty-seven thousand was arrived at, but looking at it, after all the years of service that Dan has put into this town, I was shocked that the comment, you know, you don't start at the top would be put out there. She's not starting, okay? And frankly, like I work in a clerical position and what she's being offered, what that comes down to hourly is really suitable pay for an intrigue clerical position, an intrigue secretary's position. Someone who's just starting as a secretary would get that kind of money. And the idea of signing a contract that specifies that there would be no vacation time, no sick pay, win, no sick pay, you can't even legally offer someone a contract like that in this state. Yeah, it's just not acceptable. And the idea that you would try to offer someone a contract that doesn't offer raises in a year when we've had almost ten percent inflation so far this year, the price of heating oil doubled since last year. So really, I find it a slap in the face, really, to her, to Suzanne, to suggest that some of us were being paid too much or that we shouldn't be going up and up on the pay. The idea that the town clerk's job is on track to be the highest-paid position offered by this town, I'm sorry. I can look at the personnel page here, the town accountant, sixty-two thousand. Here's Beverly, Office Assistant, forty-eight thousand. Joe Gunter, eighty-four thousand. You know, there's, I can go on and on, you know, the police officers are getting fifty-eight thousand. You know, Bill Humphries is getting eighty-one thousand. Aaron, the DPW Superintendent, gets sixty-three thousand. Dale Kerber is getting almost seventy-five thousand. So where the idea that the town clerk is on track to be the highest-paid job in this town came from, I don't know. But anyway, when I look at what is considered even the most basic pay for someone who's working full-time here, I don't see anybody, not anybody, who's making less than forty thousand. And most of them are making forty-five, forty-eight, or something in the fifties, or even eighty. So, yeah, I just am shocked by it all. I think a lot of voters were shocked by it all. If you want to attract and retain talented, knowledgeable people, you need to compensate them appropriately and show them the respect they deserve. And I can't help but think that perhaps part of the reason that you thought it was, I don't know, that the number of thirty-seven thousand was come up with for the town clerk was that its work is traditionally done by women and women's work is traditional, is not valued as highly by some people. I value that work. Anyway, that's on the other thing.
Okay, anybody else for public comment? Okay, thank you. Department head reports. Bill, do you want to go first?
Sheriff spent a nice two weeks, we had no arrests last week. We rolled fifty-nine traffic tickets and/or municipal violations, eighteen written warrants, one parking, excuse me, one parking violation and we saw four crash. Three should four overweight permits, they'll just start to wane away because of the March thirty-first deadline, so they'll filter in, but it won't give a lot of them. We did sixteen sets of civilian fingerprints, fingerprints, excuse me. I sent a junk letter and ordinance to four Washington Street about the tires at some point, about the tire stack up on the corner over here. It's not about them, and not her back, none yet. Saturday, we had a possible arson, I think a little arrow, that's still under investigation. An intoxicated person, like suicidal person on West Street, and a welfare truck on Apple Tree Lane. Overall, last week, we had a hundred and thirty calls for service and year to date, we're at eleven twenty-one.
Questions for the police department?
Kind of in the one man's trash is another man's treasure. What does our, what does our ordinance say about those tires? I mean, it's kind of a, it's, it's, we've gone on the south side. I think it's a decorative thing that people are...
Raise flower beds.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, it, it's not my cup of tea, but it, it, like I said, it's one man.
If you look at the ordinance alone and just take tires, there's a violation. So I'm expecting a phone call and that conversation with them. And those are two residents that were brought to the center. Was the south side, so I have not gone there yet. It's on the list to follow up, and I guess that would become back to the board's interpretation on, the ordinance alone stands as it's a violation.
And as a health officer concerned, these tires do not have any dirt around the rim and they're full of water and they'll be in the street reading grounds.
I get all that. I, I'm not, I just want to make sure that we're on sound ground to be able to do that. I mean, I remember probably the sixties or something, there was, there was a stylizing where people cut the tires and rolled them out.
Rolled around the rim.
Rolled, rolled them out, yeah, they looked like a flower, but they didn't look like a flower. Well, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, there's, are we splitting hairs? And I just want to make sure we're, we're, we're okay with the, with the way the ordinance reads, that's all.
But if, if they were, if they were filled with dirt for a flower bed, there'd be no water.
Right.
I mean, that would eliminate the situation with water. You know, if somebody's using them for a flower bed, you know, I don't, I don't really see a problem with it myself, but as long as it's not an empty tire just laying there, is what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
So it's really how...
Yeah, I'm expecting a phone call.
Yeah, you'll have to talk with them.
And maybe that's a compromise.
Are these tires full, are they just empty tires painted?
They're right there, you can see them.
It's...
Just so they're just tires that's painted, that's it?
Yeah.
The Washington Street and four, one of the four numbers I can't remember, I did have a conversation with them and they're gonna work on reducing their amount of the snowmobiles and stuff that's been building up on the corner and he looks thankful that I called him and I'm on the same page with him. I also am working on five, seven, and nine, that's kind of where I am now on that with the junk in the garbage. Seven and five, I spoke to directly, nine actually got a letter in the landlord and the tenant and they're both aware of it. So they're, and I'm hoping if they seem to be progressing towards cleaning that little section up. It's gotten pretty bad, there's debris everywhere if you drive down there. Those three houses on that side are, are not, saying that they're helping.
There was a vehicle pulling or tearing one of them.
Other questions for Bill? Alright, thanks, Bill. DPW?
DPW's actually on vacation. I'm gonna, I'm gonna catch Aaron's report and a little bit of the manager report. But I'd like to start with recognizing Jenny Bertram. Jenny retired, her last official day was Saturday, the sixteenth. Jenny had worked here for fourteen years. She was steadfast in her belief that she was gonna make our books correct and write every time, and she, they absolutely were. She gained the trust of me personally, and I hope, and I think the board's selectmen, and we just, I... I would like to thank Jenny for her time here in Fairhaven. She taught me a lot, just over the four years that I was here. And with that, I have a letter if the, if the board would like to read it and sign it, thanking Jenny for her, for her service.
Do you want to read it as a clear?
Sure.
Put you to work on?
Put me, I knew there was gonna be. The letter says, Dear Jenny, the Fairhaven Board of Selectmen, the town of Fairhaven, would like to congratulate you on your retirement and thank you for fourteen years of service to the town. As you take your next steps in life's journey, we hope that you look back on your time with us with some fond memories. From day one, you were, you were a valuable asset to the Board of Selectmen and the town manager. Your attention to detail, honesty and determination to ensure town accounts were consistently accurate and reliable earned you the complete trust and admiration of the board, as well as the town managers and others that you worked with you. We knew you were always looking out for the best interest of the town. We wish you all the best in this, your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for your service, and then signed by the select board. Jenny did very, very nicely.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you, Joe, for recognizing her, she did a great job and definitely served fourteen years, I believe you said?
Fourteen. Irreplaceable.
So do you need a motion?
So replace her now.
Okay, a little bit about town manager, the town manager. The charging, the charging stations, the EV, electric vehicle charging stations downtown, and that project is up and running again. The company that was installing those, those stations ran into supply chain issues last year. They said they will get it done this year, get the installation of those units in this year. They are coordinating with Hillary from the, they did that stormwater study.
Yep.
They want to make sure that they're not gonna impact any kind of stormwater situation, and we don't want to cause flooding in the area. So we'll be meeting with them onsite in a few weeks.
Where are they, they gonna go approximately where they were or someplace?
Same spot.
Okay.
Same spot.
Just one or are you doing two again?
Uh, it's, it's two, and I don't recall what the site looks like, if it's two that have four, four plugins or if it's two that has, like, one is a supercharger. So it depends on what they're gonna do over there. We let DP know, DPW know about those yield markings out here on North Main, they will get at that. No movement yet, but that's coming. We got two, DPW did replace two culverts up on Green Road. They did some ditching up there, so if you go up there, take a look, they spent a few days cleaning that space up. Adam Street Bridge, that grant was submitted to the federal government again. We're at a two-point-three million dollar request. Same amount of match, just we're asking for more money. I did ask the Welsh Office, they do congressional appropriations now, the old earmark-style government spending. I did ask for that bridge and that spending as well, I figured, you know, belt and suspenders kind of thing. And then a little bit more money for Town Hall. The hydro grant, we submitted a letter of intent for a hydro grant that went in this morning. That was a two-million-dollar request. So budget, just to bring the board up to budget, last time I said we were just slightly over budget for this time of year. We're back at, at budget, so actually a few points under where we should be. So that's, I'm feeling better about that. I did freeze oh-one-oh budget last week, just to give you a heads up. It's the way prices are right now, and it just, everything's up. I didn't want to take the chance of popping that budget. Salt Shit RFP was replaced, released a couple of weeks ago, deadline is April twenty-ninth for that, for those to be back. So next week, we should be getting something. Playground replacement, that was pushed back two weeks to May second. So that's, that's where that guy is at.
That's supply chain things too, right?
It is, yeah. She, she felt terrible, she, she sent me an email and she said, Joe, I've been tracking this for weeks. And then all of a sudden, like, the week before it was supposed to get here, they, they backpedaled on her, so.
Two items backwards or something like that, right?
Yeah. I think they had some pieces but not others, and they're not gonna ship two, two shipments, so. The project I was working on for almost a year now, that Clark probate, the house over on the hill near the tracks, that probate case is finally closed. The wing case, fourth and mechanic, that probate, that probate case is coming to a close. So we should start seeing some cash from that. Talking about the trailer park, last meeting, there was a request to kind of reach out, see if we couldn't find some, some help for folks. I did reach out to the homeless prevention, and then there was, there was another, another state group, state agency that helps convert trailer parks from like individual-owned to community-owned parks. They've reached out, I've given them some information and they're kind of going through their process now for that. So we're looking for ways to help. On that note, I was, I was asked a while back for some numbers on the trailer park. To date, without getting into the aggregate, to date, that parcel owes the town forty-two thousand dollars, almost, yeah, forty-two thousand dollars in water and taxes. Letters went out to those who need to change their water meters. We've got a good response back. I, I think some people have called and it's not, it's not a matter of, hey, I'm just not gonna do that. Most people have legitimate reasons, like, I don't have access to the property now, or whatever the case may be. So we're hopeful to get that done this summer. We did give people a deadline to June, to June first to get that, get their meters replaced.
Now, what do you mean by a good response? If everybody's pretty much answered the letter and been cooperative?
People are calling and they're being cooperative. And, and they're not being angry about it, they're just saying, hey, I, one home comes to mind, the brother called and said, I'll, I'll let you in, but I have to have my other brother there, it's some kind of like co-ownership thing. So he didn't want to step on his brother's toes. It's like, well, that makes sense, right? Like, people are just following their own rules. And today, Charlotte came in and she gave us a thank you card. This just made my day. It was just the most adorable thing, this little girl came in. She said, thank you to the DPW for getting rid of the tree. My brother, me and my brothers liked watching you. So, yeah, we, we received that to this afternoon. See, and that's why I love, this is the thing that I love about my job, it's like, the people are great. And that is what I got for you today.
Questions for DPW or town manager?
I just got one comment, I did check out Green Road up there, the culvert, said, oh, really nice, they're doing a great job up there, I believe. That's the stuff that needs to be done way ahead of the paving, for sure. And we need to continue that as much as possible.
I'll say this again, I've said it a couple of times about the EV station. I don't know why it wouldn't be incorporated in then the, the new free parking upgrades that we're doing. That would be a more logical place for it, but I don't know, don't know if it's too late.
I was supposed to check on that. I'll make sure I do that.
I, I, you know, it, it's not too late because we haven't broken ground.
That's not, that's not even in the planning stages, right? Yeah, correct.
It's, we've got engineering so far.
Engineering, I think.
And certainly you've had a study.
Well...
Couple of them.
You did study. Those are, those are cheap.
Yeah, my only comment is, we'd had Green Mountain Power take theirs out. We, so there hasn't been EV. If Park and Ride is still two years out?
Not this summer, potentially this summer after, yes.
Understand...
We want to climb out.
That not having, as everyone's pushing electric vehicle, electric vehicle, electric vehicle, we're taking an awful long time, and if we, my experience with Park and Ride, if we go back and ask them again, did I just add another year to the cycle? Because they're gonna want to look at the design and they're gonna have to add studies, and we're gonna have to come in. We've done, I'll, I'll stop thinning, but I'm saying we, every time we ask a question, it stops. It seems like we take four steps back and then complain after that these projects don't ever get in.
And right now where it is, all the wiring and stuff is there.
Right.
How they gonna just hook them off?
And I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we don't put them in, and then, and then we might decide when, when they do finally get Park and Ride.
Maybe they could just put a couple more there.
But I wouldn't slow anything down, it takes forever to get any project completed as it is.
But actually, it's kind of gonna be a separate scenario anyway. A parking ride, you wouldn't want them parking all day in a charging station area.
One wouldn't think, one wouldn't think.
You know what I mean? So you don't really want to...
It's not that scenario though, as far as I'm concerned. What you're, you're doing is you're enticing people into a, into a place, they plug in, then they walk around town and do.
Right, but parking ride, I take as, I park my car and I open it, I was somebody else in New York City and I'm gone two or three days, you know?
Yeah, that's not our park, I don't even know why we're calling it parking ride, but, but I get what you're saying, Glenn, I, I get that.
Just want to caution us, that's all.
Alright, thanks, Joe. Old business, town clerk compensation package, and I think at the last meeting, Joe was gonna find out whether there was health insurance included in the budget or not. I believe Jenny got back to us and said there was a single plan. Is that correct, Joe?
That is correct. I had Jenny look that up and mail it directly to the board.
Yeah, okay.
And part of that email also was, there was a vision plan for one member as well?
Right.
Yeah.
That's part of that scene.
Yeah.
And which I would be grateful for, but I would also like to say if I was hired by the town and I came in and I had a husband, which I do, he would probably be covered by the same policy and it wouldn't be, well, we don't have that covered in there. I'd like to throw that out, that I'm throwing my husband under the bus for some insurance.
Okay, so this was a continuation of our conversation of last meeting, and I think Jay had the question about if it was in the budget or not. So kind of where's the board at and kind of where do we want to?
So now we can go on with our, what we want to do.
Yeah, yeah.
We know that's there, so that's, you know, that can go on the table and go from there.
So how about where?
So what is, if it's voted in, we, we don't have, we don't have any choice and I don't have a problem with it to begin with. But I mean, we have what we have to offer, is what I think.
Right, but I'm saying if, if I was, somebody came in and was replacing somebody else on staff and that person didn't have a double plan, or a husband and wife, whatever you call it, you wouldn't just say to that person, well, the last person who wrote his job didn't have that, Suzanne did until, until Fran aged out of the, of the system, so to speak.
I, I think it's the, the same answer, I would, I would have said to Deb earlier, and it's, it's an elected position as opposed to a staff position. So it's, I, I think it's different.
I know you do. I know you do.
So I, I, you know, I just think it's basic philosophy. It, it's, it's a, it's a, it's an elected position. It shouldn't be one that, that you, that is some great salary. I mean, a good sali, you know?
Livable, I think the word you're looking for is livable.
No, yeah, I know, I know, and I, and I'm struggling with that, but I'll be perfectly honest with you, I'm struggling with the idea that, but it's an elected position and with the possible exception of people in DC, people in Vermont don't look at elected positions as, as...
Did you look at the, did you look at the stuff I gave you last week, Matt?
Yes.
You did, did you look at the survey that I handed out to you on town clerks?
Yeah, and you're not, you're not, you're not that far off, and you're brand new at it.
I'm here for twelve, twelve years.
No, no, no.
Twelve, yeah, yeah.
Several times, several times in the discussion last time, you said how much you depended on the input of, of Suzanne. So you're not totally, you're not totally...
Oh, I know, but I'm certainly not coming in and not to do, not knowing how to do anything.
No, I get that.
And I, and this is not about the salary, that's kind of, I'm just looking for, I'm just looking to be treated so that, what, what, half of the issue is, it's hard to find people to run for offices, period. And then you come in here and you're told, well, you know, McDonald's pays you better, so you might as well go there. Who's gonna come and do this job when they know, and I know Ridge said, well, get a high school kid. High school kids are leaving in droves because they can't make a living here. I've got three kids, one of them is here. They couldn't make a living here. You want to be able to pay these people who you want to serve the community enough that they want to stay. You know, I get that, I don't work for GE, you know, I don't work for the school system, I don't work for Hubbard and Forge, but I work for the town and I, and what I do here is of great value to you.
I'm not saying that.
And to everyone sitting in this room. And if you're not gonna say, well, you're elected and so minimum wage is probably where you should find yourself, that, that doesn't equate with twenty-twenty-two anymore.
Minimum wage, I understand, minimum wage versus, that's, that's kind of, that's language that isn't applicable here. First of all, minimum wage is twelve-something.
Twelve fifty-five.
Right.
And starting pay for a secretary is what you're giving her. It is, I know.
But the point is, is it's not a staff position, it's an elected, that's my problem, Deb. It's, it's an elected position, I would, I might, I'm idealistic enough to think that an elected position, that you're doing it for the good of the community, not, not so you can make money. And I don't know.
But that's, it's now a full-time job, and you're asking, you're asking anybody who had that position to be grateful to work in the office for forty hours and do all this work.
You're gonna work forty hours, you're gonna work four ten-hour days.
I, I was until this all started, I was working ten, and then I said, wait a minute, this is sad.
How did you get your lister time in? How did you get your lister time in?
There's such a thing as Saturdays. There's such a thing as Sundays. There's such a thing as after work. So, yeah, I was working that too.
I, well, like, I, we don't punch, you don't punch clocks, so I don't know.
No, I, no, I don't punch the clock. Well, I do write it down. I, and I, I haven't turned in a timesheet in a couple weeks. But, um, but I, I've come in here on Saturdays and Sundays and after work. And so, you know, that's a different job. That's a totally different subject. And I actually.
Well, I, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about that. I just, how are you gonna be able to do both? I'd.
Well, there, there are a lot of towns that have both.
First, first and foremost, I, I don't want you to work seven hundred hours a week just to get two jobs done. I, I'd rather that not happen.
Well, I'd like to work one job and be able to make a living and, and feed myself. But at the moment, I'm just looking, you know, I'm just looking for, for if I came in and I know you think I'm elected and it's a totally different ball of wax, but in my head, I'm not a different ball of wax. I'm, I work for this town and maybe, maybe I worked because I got votes instead of I was hired. But it's, it's a job and I was voted into this job, if you could look at it that way. Instead of filling out my application, I said to the voters, vote for me. This is what I can do for you. And I got a lot of votes. So I'm just asking for, I'm asking for a bone, as we say in the lister's office. Throw me a bone. You know, uh, you're not gonna pay me a lot of money this year, and I get it. But I, I would really and truly appreciate it if you would at least find a little extra money to cover my husband's insurance too. I personally don't think that's asking for the money.
What's the difference between a two-person plan and a one-person plan?
I, I guess that's a.
Literally double.
Guess that makes sense.
I would like to make sure we have that in writing.
Let me, uh, well, let, I have, I have the paperwork in my.
So I would like to see it in writing.
But we're not gonna make a decision on this tonight because we're doing.
This is ridiculous. I, this is now over a month, Jay.
Okay, but right now you're getting the salary that Suzanne got. Am I correct?
Yes.
So you're getting paid what she got paid from now until the first of June. Well, it's still, we gotta find this money. We can't just pull it out of something. Like you're saying, the thirty-seven thousand. Where are we supposed to get extra money? The people voted in thirty-seven thousand.
What I am, I'm not asking you to come up with extra money.
Where are we supposed to get the extra money?
I'm not asking you for that. I know what's in there for next year. I'm just saying if I came in and just consider that the town has hired me for this job, which the town has, the voters have spoken, they said, you get this job. I don't think any of the voters said, you get this job, but we're not gonna pay you benefits. We're not gonna give you insurance. We're not gonna give you time off, which is what I was given to start with. And that's half the reason why we're in the mess we're in today.
Joe, what do you got on there for?
Uh, six thirty-seven, this is monthly. Six, six thirty-seven oh five, uh, for a single and one thousand two seventy-four ten for a double. Uh, when you multiply the first, it does, by two, you do get the second. So it's twice as much.
Is that to the town or after you take eighty-twenty split?
Uh, that's, that's the total cost. It's eighty-twenty split. Uh, eighty percent to the town on the first, on the single plan is five hundred and nine dollars. So, hundred and change to the employee. And doubled, doubled for, uh, or the two-person plan.
A question. For people who are, who are hired, they do get coverage for their spouses. I know that from my job. Right?
Yeah.
So, the idea that somehow because someone's elected, they shouldn't get. They mayor, every legislator, the president, they're all elected.
No, no legislatures in the state of Vermont get any insurance. We don't get any insurance, obviously. Um, it, we're elected. I mean, I don't know.
But you can't say you're elected and, I worked on the planning commission for years. I, I made a hundred dollars a year. You know, I, I never asked for insurance. It's, that's not the same thing. I wrote the town plan with, there are two of us. We didn't even get a stipend that year. Not a penny. I spent hundreds of hours. I never came to the board and said, listen, I put all these hours in. I want some extra money. I never asked for it. I'm asking for this because I am now hired by the, by the citizens of this town. They hired me to do this job. They, it's not five people sitting on a board. It was four hundred and seventy, four hundred and forty, whatever it was, out of five hundred people said, you are hired.
But you ran on the post.
Let me ask you.
I didn't, well, there's, may have been a reason I ran on the post.
No, nobody knew there was that position. Who knows? Who knows? Who knows? I, I don't know. I, I can't explain it. Um, let me ask you a question. This, we got X amount of dollars we're not paying for, for, um, the insurance. Suzanne's insurance, and I'm, I'm assuming her husband was on her.
No, she wasn't.
He was on it till he retired, till he hit sixty-five.
Okay, so there's no money budgeted in there. We're not, there's no money that we're, we're accruing, is what I was saying. If we could finagle that and put it in there and make it less of an impact, wouldn't be such a problem. You know, it wouldn't be so, you know, we, then we could figure it out for the next budget, for sure, but.
I mean, we did have, so the accountant, the, the accountant did, did retire, but anticipating somebody to replace that spot as well. So it's not like there's. There's not a lot of offset, especially now. We're right at.
But when we budget, we bus, budget on our best guess, right? DPW could get a new guy right now and he could have a family plan, or she could have a family plan. Could be replacing somebody that's a single plan.
It'd be six thousand dollars. Well, I. That to, to do the two-person, it, it's an extra six thousand dollars to do the two-person plan.
Per year?
Per year.
There's, I'm just trying to get my head around.
And I figured on five hundred dollars, because you said it's, they're the same and it's five oh one, you said, for the single plan.
Uh, for the town, it would be five oh nine.
Five oh nine. So it's still, it, but you're looking at six, about six thousand dollars extra.
It looked like there's two things going on. One, we asked to go see if there were benefits in, in Suzanne's money. Came back with the answer is, yes, there were. The medical was one person instead of two, but the vision was two people. So there was two-person vision that was there and one-person medical. And I know we made the decision at our last meeting that says, take the pay that was in there and pay through June thirty. And so what we're talking about is, and what I hear is, we need the, the medical for two instead of one, and the money's there. So we're looking for, do we?
No, it isn't there.
No, it isn't.
Well, well, what I'm saying, the money's there for one.
Right.
But I'm still, there's two people versus one. This is gonna, we could budget. I, I agree with the argument. It says you can budget for someone who's one, and then they, they, their situation changes throughout the year and they have to go to two. You didn't budget for that, but you're, but you're covering for it. So I'm, I'm, I don't think that's, paying, where I, where I'm sitting is, is we made the decision last time to get, take the balance of Suzanne's salary and pay that through June thirty. There was benefits there. To me, it's just a yes, no. So therefore, if it's a two-person, we pay benefits from until June thirty. The real question comes after July one. And that, that one thirty-seven thousand we put in there? Now, to me, that doesn't say no benefits. It says that whatever you do, it's gotta add up. Only got a bucket. This is big. And it's got thirty-seven thousand in it. So if that means it isn't forty hours a week, with, with medical benefits, benefits added, what, what adds up to having two-person medical a, a, and the, having?
But I think that, that thirty-seven though was a salary line item. Benefits come out of a different area of the budget. They're not, it's not, benefits for the town, they're separated out.
So what we're saying is, after July one, if we were to give benefits, it would, we don't have six thousand dollars in the budget.
Well, do you have that DPW guy that just left and went up to Benson? He had a family. Did he have insurance? See, I mean, there might be three that went to one person coming in. You know, you have some kid from high school coming in.
The real question comes back, do we want to, to me, it's paying benefits through June thirty. After July one, the only question for this board right here is, do you wanna give benefits? I think, when I come back, because we've already got, thirty-seven's not gonna change. That's, that's where it is. And benefits is a separate line item, you tell me, right? So the real question comes back.
Do we wanna, do we wanna give benefits to, to, set two-person benefits as opposed to one?
But, and then I.
We've already budgeted for one.
And I come back in the pamphlet of paperwork that you gave us. And what I've read before was most town clerks do have benefits. Us not doing benefits for the town clerk, whether it's elected or appointed, um, it's, it doesn't seem to matter from what I read. If we don't, if we don't give benefits, and there are some that don't. And I'm not saying that we would be unique either, but they said the majority of them, I don't wanna. Get, get benefits. So what I, there's two things that I think Danny's here tonight for. Am I going to get benefits from now to, to June thirty? And are you gonna give me benefits? I, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but are you gonna, but are you gonna give me benefits after July one? And we don't necess, and I'm saying, I don't need any more time to think about whether I wanna make a decision on that. I, I, I would make, as a matter of fact, I don't, if you want to perform a motion, I'll make a motion that we pay the two-person benefits for, uh, Dini and the, uh, through June thirty. I'll do it in two different motions.
Okay, is there a second?
We just got a question first.
Yep.
The reason Suzanne was only getting a one-person insurance benefit was her husband was
Already hadn't.
Off on, uh,
Yeah.
Medicare or whatever.
She had covered him until he hit sixty-five.
Okay.
Now, my husband is sixty-three and a half.
I got you.
So I, you know, he only needs coverage for a year and a half, and then he'll be on.
I just, just, that was, that was a question for my, I, I wanna understand what's going on here.
She, she did have coverage for him until he aged out.
Yep. So there's a motion by Glenn for a second.
All second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay to offer a two-person plan to the town clerk until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any post? Motion carries.
Danny, one other thing. When budget time comes and when we start doing a budget for next year, that's when you should come in and see us.
Well, I.
No, no, I'm just saying, I wasn't here in the, I wasn't here on the board the last time, so I, I'm not. But just come in then and give us an idea of what you might be expecting or what you would like to put in.
Absolutely.
And that way there, if we put it in the budget and the people voted in, there's no problem.
Absolutely. And what I, you know, there's a lot of stuff that, you know, of course Suzanne didn't go to meetings. I have thirty-five dollars for training. You know, I. So there's, there's, you know, and that makes my.
Is all of the assistant money gone for this year?
No, um, there isn't. There is a little bit left. Um, she's gonna be working, uh, the dog clinic. I don't know if there's a few hundred left. I think Jenny put three hundred, which, um, will go a couple days. Um, and then last, next year, that budget has been.
Couple days? Couple days.
That's three hundred dollars. It's not gonna go very far.
Getting paid more than you, though.
Uh, well, if I find somebody who works for less than I will, I'm gonna be lucky. I certainly, she won't work for fourteen dollars and sixty-five, sixty cents an hour. I lied. I said fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents I was making. It was actually fourteen dollars and sixty cents I was making. Um, but there's not that many days until the end. Um, but she has no experience whatsoever. You know, she's.
So now I'll make a motion that after July one, we include two-person benefits and, and vision for the town clerk position.
The vision's already there, right?
Yes.
What?
Vision, vision is your due rate.
Sorry.
Vision's already there. So, uh, two-person benefits for healthcare.
Okay, is there a second?
All second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob's, who include a two-person healthcare plan for the town clerk, um, for the next fiscal year.
Okay, one question. Where's the money coming from? That's all I wanna know. I mean, I, I think it's a good idea to give the insurance, but I mean, we've also gotta, what, if, if there's a way of getting this six thousand, fine. I don't have a problem with it at all.
I, I feel the money, there's so many different pluses and minuses throughout the year. Like our DPW person who's not here, that we haven't got a replacement and yet for. Uh, we've got our accountant who, uh, another one's not here. We're probably gonna be a while and there's, that, that money, the pluses and minuses come back. Is it gonna be exact for the cost?
And my question is, our salary's thirty-seven or whatever. That's the salary, that's the money that's paid upfront for services, right? The insurance comes out of a different pot, I understand.
Correct.
So that pot just, like I say.
Went up six thousand.
It shrinks, it goes.
Depending on what.
We save three or four months on one person. And that goes back in there.
Correct.
So, it's just that next year of budget time, everybody's gotta, everybody's gotta really get this deciphered out better.
You're right. There's, there's less, about three hundred and fifty dollars left in your assistant.
In my assistant, for, until July.
Bill, did you have a question?
I just think in my experience in budgeting, that we've done, and I think Joe, I think you already touched on it, Chris, that health insurance is your best suggestion. And that varies from year to year. And we even guessed them at youth. And they, they say that you should carry sixty percent, sixty-five percent in gambling. That's like the normal usage of your healthcare. And so I think you're gonna have that fluctuation from year to year. It's really hard because some people might use more or less. And I went off this year, so if that helps anybody else.
Question.
Okay. Um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, thanks, Danny.
Thank you. Very, very, I really would like to say thank you very much. I appreciate us coming along. And I know it hasn't been easy for any of us, and it's been contentious. And I, I really, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, you can.
One thing that should be noted, Deb, I really resent you, you, uh, accusing us of, uh, of sexism. It doesn't happen in this town. It never has happened in this town. And I can give you several examples of when it, when I was personally made sure it didn't happen in this town. And, and to say that is, cuts, cuts deeply. And I just wanted. You know, if somebody calls you a jerk and you don't say, no, I'm not a jerk, then you may be a jerk. So I'm, I'm just saying, it doesn't happen.
I'm sorry, but to my, like, when I look at the types of jobs and what they're being paid and what clarify what they're being paid.
It's.
And even saying, okay, I understand what you're saying, because she's elected, you can pay her less. But my point to you was, if you want to attract and retain experienced, knowledgeable, talented people, you need to compensate them fairly. And paying someone with it. I make more. I just started.
Well, I, I know that, and I, I don't wanna. I don't wanna make it long. I just want you to understand that I don't believe we practice that and, and never have.
And Carol was on the board when we went through the budget process.
Alright, well, fair enough. But.
Anyways, we're moving on.
I was thinking less of the fact that that amount of money was offered than some of the comments that were made.
I, I don't care. I, you know, the town clerk can be male, female, or, or any, any pronoun. And, um, and that to be, it will, my opinion will still be in a selected official. That's the difference.
Alright, well, I'm sorry. It just certainly appeared that way when we looked at it.
Yeah, I, I know, but it should, it shouldn't. And that's why I'm denying it.
Alright.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Deb. Alright, capital budget discussion. Joe, do you wanna go? Hand it over. There's a handout in the board packet.
Uh, so we're, we're back. This is the, the new capital program policy that was, uh, implemented last year. Um, it kinda shifted the idea of setting up just a standard month-to-month, year-to-year, or year-to-year, um, payment schedule. Uh, we moved it to more, uh, more of an idea of what do you need this year? Um, bring that to the board, your priorities this year, and let the board decide if those priorities, uh, fit in our budget. Um, I went back to the departments and asked them, what, what's your? Um, I went back to the departments and asked them, what, what's your capital request? And in your packet, there should be a capital reimbursement, or I'm sorry, a, uh, cap, I'm sorry, capital request, uh, capital request list. These are the, uh, these are the kinda big-ticket items that the, uh, staff was looking to purchase this year, or drop into the budget as that, as that gets around.
Okay.
Well, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I believe we talked about vehicles, and we decided to be no vehicles bought, at least for this year and possibly next year. And two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for a single axle dump truck, it's a little high. I know they're expensive, but I think we should go back to look at a state bid, like we did once before, and got a state truck. Everybody wants something shiny here, and, and, you know, and we can't do it anymore, we, we bought a lot of equipment in the last couple of years. The backhoe, the transfer station, for what little bit that backhoe's being used down there, why do we need to buy a brand-new one? I mean, there's an ad in the paper right now.
What's wrong with one of those there?
Nothing, they're, they're using it every day, and there's an ad in the paper right now for an auction for the state of Vermont. There's a line of backhoes up there, I mean, if we get to the point where you wanna go up and look at some, I mean, we don't need a brand-new backhoe for down at the landfill. And the one that's there, it works, everything's fine on it, uh, I don't see why they've got it in there. And of course, the next one is the fire trucks, I put around with our fire trucks. You know, there's no miles on them.
My, my only question, when I looked at things like under rec, fence repair, ball repair, muni grounds, fence painting, picnic table. When you say cap, is the money there, and if the purpose was so that we would do these things? Uh, I'm going, if you've got the money, are you just looking for an okay to do what, what you're going to do? I mean, these were like eight thousand, three thousand, if that rec department has a budget for upkeep. Go do your upkeep, I, I'm, I'm looking as a SLEF Lloyd person, saying, I don't need to, uh, manage it to, to that, that quite, that level. If you don't have money and you're asking to take it from somewhere, then I'd wanna talk, because money's tight, and I, I agree with, with Jay, now's not the time to buy any new vehicles, now's not the time with interest rates and everything else to get into these long payments, I think we have, we, we need to find ways. And when I look at a capital budget list, I, I look to say, what do we have to replace this year? And anything we absolutely don't have to replace this year to keep going, I'd be leaning towards unless that money was, is there, and I don't have to go out and borrow money, or steal it from someplace else. I wouldn't want, I'd be cautious not to spend it.
Yeah, because, you know, in a couple of years, you might see interest rates back down for halfway reasonable.
My, my question is, why does a transfer station need a pickup truck? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm being serious here, I mean, I just, I just don't see a wastewater.
That's wastewater.
Wastewater, I don't see it.
They've got, they've got one there now.
I mean, do they move a lot of stuff on a daily basis?
Uh, they use the pickup truck mostly for pump stations, so for example, if they gotta get a, one of the big pumps out of the pump station. Cause it's not just something you grab and put in the back of your car, you know, it's, those things are substantial, they'll go in the back of the truck. Just basic hauling.
Yeah, they've also got a winch in the back of it, if I remember correctly, for the pull-up. Well, it's a one that just hooks into the back of the truck, but, um, they use it for pulling the pumps, if they had to pull a pump or something. But again, there, there's no mileage on these trucks.
Well, and the other question, I, when I see that pickup truck, I don't care if it's new or not, I'm saying is the truck rusted out so bad we can't get inspected, and that's why we need a newer used truck? Because then I'd say, okay, I wanna see it on the list, and we probably have to address something. But if it's, well, it's, it's probably time, this truck's so many years old. We, if we can drive that truck and use that truck for another five, six years, why wouldn't we do that?
Just for an example, the van from the, the water treatment plant was junk, they had to get rid of it because it was junk. Well, DPW drove it now for two years. But the thing of it is, this is the, this is what we get from these people, it's no good, we gotta get rid of it. You know, and it's not, I mean, somebody else will buy it and you drive it.
Got any help? And another, another thing too, why can't some of these, say, say the van, DPW's using the van, why can't when the, when the transfer station needs, why can't they borrow that van for a day or two and do what they need to do? Cause I'm sure they don't pull these pumps every day.
No, they don't.
You know what I'm saying? They don't need one there just to go for coffee.
They don't use equipment to go to coffee.
No, I, but I'm just saying, you know, you don't, you don't need it sitting there for six months, and then use it one or two days.
They also check, I, I'll, I'll give the, uh, uh, treatment plant credit, cause they do go out. I see them go by the house quite a bit checking their pumps, so they do use the truck to go check the pumps. You know, make sure if it's flowing properly, but I just feel that we don't get longevity out of these vehicles, cause they're not taken care of.
And if I can make a comment, Jay, about that pickup truck versus that van, ask DPW how much money they put into that to get it fixed.
Well, why are they doing it?
I don't know, I wasn't here at the time, but all I know is I had to drive it to Colchester once a week, when the state demanded that we do those tests once a week. And every day I got back here, I kissed the ground because that thing is junk. You're driving along, and all of a sudden you head for the bushes, or you won't stop, because they've had to put brake lines on it three times now.
So we're spending good money after that.
That's why we said to get rid of it, and that's why we got rid of it. So my department wants to put all kinds of money into it, they can have it.
And what do, what do they do with that van every day? I mean.
They just use it to run around.
And they drive, what, once a month, twice a month?
I know, it's all more than that, but, and I'm just pointing, I'm just making them, we gotta just start maintaining our vehicles. There's no reason we can't get ten years or so out of a vehicle, easy, and we're not getting that, that's, that's the point I'm trying to get at.
What I know about vehicles is start and stop, start and stop all day long, takes their toll on them. And in a small town like this, they don't get really warmed up good, so they just start out on them. So that's gonna happen, but that's why I'm thinking going and sharing sometimes may work well for certain situations.
I, I don't want you to hit the list here to say that we're saying no to everything here, because I, when I see the exterior repairs, if you're talking the soffit with all the holes and everything in here, that needs to be done, but I'm just saying, if you've got money there, and you were going to do it, I, I don't, if, if you're, I, I'm okay, we could go and do it.
I think we talked about the, the money that we've got, the seven-hundred-something thousand, about doing our chemical tanks. At the water treatment plant, that was, that was one of the main, main things that we looked at, and.
Twenty-five thousand, same.
And then, yeah, and then, and start some of the upgrade on electricity, I mean, I believe we discussed that the last time you was in.
I mean, that's when I key it on, when I see capital, actual capital improvements.
Right.
Mike's to our capital improvements, I, like picnic tables, that's not, it's not a capital asset, that's not.
We'll go down and get some lumber from the landfill and build a couple.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, that should go on the regular budget, it's not a capital.
I think them chemical tanks oughta be done ASAP, at least get, get things started on them. I actually.
You're right.
I actually went up there today, and Mike gave me a tour of the place, and it's very impressive up there. And the upkeep up there, just, they've been doing a great job.
Well, I think, I really think the chemical tanks should be.
Yeah, I do.
I mean, we should be looking now to see the belt taken care of, and what we have to do.
So there, there is in water capital improvements, there is two-hundred-and-eighty, almost two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars sitting in that account. I, I don't recall anything being marked from that, do you recall any big projects, Mike? You're marked out of that money?
Nothing, I mean, we've, the, uh, chlorine analyzer and all that, I think in all my, you know, regular yearly budget for this year.
Yeah.
But as far as big capital plans.
When you're talking electrical work, are you talking the, uh, big board, the, the old board as well, is that part of it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
Cause that thing's older.
He was up there this afternoon, and I, if I had thought about it, I'd have brought it, but I was showing him that, we're just getting random signals. Random times that make no sense, and we've had, like, high chlorine alarms go off at two o'clock in the morning. It shows the chemical pump is coming from, you know, more chlorine, but yet you look at the water flow, and that is just as smooth as can be at two o'clock.
Right.
You know, just somewhere we're getting phantom.
So it's.
It's controls.
It's time.
It's the controls, electric.
It's time, I mean.
As I said before, I mean, these are original wires and circuits and stuff, and you know, I do realize that, you know, we don't have half, three-quarters of a million dollars to do the whole thing at once. And I talked to the company, they can do it in phases, we just gotta prioritize what phase to start with, and hopefully.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, that's a capital improvement, like you're saying.
I think we should get on the tanks.
I do.
I think it's a good exercise looking at this stuff, because when I saw the, I don't want the fire department to think we don't want the new pumper, but when I look at what we have in our funds policy, we only have two-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars in the reserve towards a new vehicle, a pumper, or a new vehicle, so there's a, we need to put more. And when you look at the backhoe, the transfer station, the seventy-five thousand dollars, I look at transfer station equipment, it's seventeen thousand dollars, we got, that's all we got there. Uh, so, it's good if, now, to see what we'd like to have, cause I think, some of this is, we like to, and then double-check what, how far do we have to go, cause I'd love to get out of this borrowing money for stuff. But that's just me, but it's a good, I'm, I like the, the tool that we have.
Yeah, and, uh, is, and, and I'm, I'm guilty of this, I get frustrated sometimes, cause everybody sees what needs to be done, but there's we have budget constraints, um, and there's nothing wrong with saying we're not gonna fund this, right? It's just what, it's just the constraints that we have on us, it's hard, it's hard on all of us, but it's, it's just what we gotta do.
Um, the, the highway, the excavator brush cutting head there, did you look any further in that thing that Jeff gave me? That you, that gave you?
No, I didn't.
Cause that has.
The, uh, the auction.
It was, uh, it's probably gone by now, it was older, older John Deere with, with a brush, and an, an Arm and Brush Cutter had the extension, the whole nine yards, an old one for twenty-five grand, I mean, it would cut all, it would do all our lawn, it would do all our mowing. And it would have that, and it had that brush cutting head on it already.
Over the rail now?
It wa, it, it was just a, something that Jeff Sheldon pointed it out to me, and something in one of the, one of the sites he looks at. And, and I think the thing was in Virginia or something, but it, it just means that there are things out there, and that might be worth looking at.
I didn't look at that state auction, but they're gonna have over the rail now.
They, those, those brush cutters are going excavators, first of all, are dangerous, they leave a mess. And, you know, we don't have that many backroads in this town. Chainsaw, we got a, we got a chipper, you know what I'm saying, I mean.
Yeah, I, 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 I know.
I, I, I think a good, I think a good over-the-rail mower is a way more beneficial than one of these brush.
Yeah.
They do make wicked mess, they are very dangerous, and, uh, once, if the brush is maintained at a, at a proper interval with the mowing machine, uh, you, you don't need that.
That's true. Well, yeah, that, my, my point is that you're getting a whole tractor for twenty-five thousand instead of just the head for eighteen brand-new. And, and once again, the shiny part, that's, it doesn't need to be shiny.
So Joe, do you have enough feedback from?
Sure, uh, so the feedback I got is, we're, at, at least from what I understand, we're interested in doing the chem tanks, everything else put on pause.
I think you should do the electrical too up there.
Electrical?
Yes, I, I, me.
What'd you say was in that budget?
Two. Two eighty-one, eight, seven, three, two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars.
Okay, so you could do, you could do almost both of them, if you're sending the other, the other money for capital improvements, still, correct?
Yes.
The ARPA money?
Yeah.
That's what they say.
Isn't that for capital improvements?
ARPA? It can be.
You can use it for what you want.
Well, I think that's, the whole deal of the water treatment plant, I think is pretty, pretty important. Um, if we get a short up there, we get electrical fire up there, we're, we're out of luck. And I, I think that that should be a priority, I think.
So if the board was interested in those, I would need a motion to expend out of the capital improvement plan, or at capital improvement, uh, reserve.
But we need a, a concrete, uh, gristle for that electrical?
For, I mean, for this much money, we'll have to get this, yeah.
As I was talking with Joe, it's kinda like going and looking for a car, you know, you can't go by a genie when you can only come up with, you know, a title of a project. So, like, we just kinda like threw a certain amount out there, if it was gonna be yes or no, I mean, if it was no, obviously it wouldn't matter.
So this hundred thousand for electrical is a guess at this point?
Is a guess, and it also depends on how much we wanna put into a phase, I mean, if he can do a quarter of it for the hundred thousand, but we, we had already decided to do half of what he can do as a first phase, you know, then, I don't know if we, I need to come back to the board and say, you know, we can go this much farther. Or if it's just, okay, if you said yes for the hundred, go ahead and do it.
I, I think you should move forward with getting better estimates, more concrete.
I'm not ready to make the motion, I wanna see some.
The RAS, all of New York, is, just down by, uh, Saratoga.
Yeah.
And he was waiting for me to get back to him, you know, if there was gonna be any money at all, otherwise, obviously, it was a dead, dead deal, but, um.
Are those controls all proprietary, or are they kinda, anybody could give you pricing, or you gotta go with specific?
We have gotten different quotes from different companies, they, they are the best out there for what type of system we're looking to do. Um, the one that we've got now, which some of you board members have been on there for a while, we don't really wanna deal with anymore.
But, can we just do that there's, that there's a consensus, at this point, there's a consensus to move forward on both of those projects, and therefore, we're not telegraphing exactly what we're gonna spend.
Exactly, I'll, I'll have him come up, do a site, another site evaluation, you know, and I'll tell him, I'll get with Joe and say, you know, this is what we wanna accomplish. What's gonna, what's the quote gonna be for?
Yeah, we're gonna have to put that out to bid.
It's gonna.
Yeah. Yeah, even that.
So I think you and Joe should work on putting that out to bid, and then, I don't think we need to approve anything tonight, it's, we don't know what we're approving. But I think of the list, that's.
Okay, I mean, well, the tanks, I'll have to get ahold of them, cause we have all the figures, the fittings and all that on papers, it's all, just the figures are more than three months old, so we gotta just redo math.
Yep. Cool.
But that, you know, should only take a day.
Okay.
To, you know, to get a higher number put back.
Alright.
Sounds good.
Alright, if you have other feedback, just let Joe know what you, what you think, and this kinda ties into the next, uh, discussion was ARPA. And I know there's a list.
Could I ask one more question about the capital?
Yeah.
Um, can we, can we get Jim or somebody from the fire department to come and talk about trucks? Well, not so much, well, yes, all of it, but I, I just, the turnout gear in particular, um, I just, it, it's.
I thought we already had the turnout gear covered.
Yeah, well, we do, we were always, we did X amount every year, so I'm, I'm not sure what's. Well, I know, I know, I just wanna know where they're at, if they can give us an inventory, and, and where they're at, and what they expect, and what they need, maybe they got more people. I don't know, you know, that would be good, I'm glad to hear that, just, I don't wanna, I just don't wanna blindly spend that money and find out it's hanging there just in case, you know, I don't think it is, I'm not making that, that accusation, I just, I just, you know, we gotta be careful.
I have, also have a question on the police department, Derek, you have carpets for ten thousand, would something else be better than carpet, or?
We've had this type of carpet since we moved back in two thousand and two, and it just, it's getting to where you run the vacuum over, and it takes another line up. So what we wanna do is. So what we wanna do is carpet squares, cause it seems to be, so if one square is bad or gets gray, you can just swap them out.
Okay.
Um, I think that it's easier, less maintenance than.
Is that what you're thinking carpet? I was just wondering if you had given any thought about laminate or something?
Yeah, that's.
Like a commercial laminate?
Well, I mean, I guess anything would be, would be better than what we have for.
Carpet, carpets really.
Carpet's kinda.
Not the way to go anymore.
Pretty much by the wayside now, you know, it's obsolete.
And it's more bacteria.
Cheaper, and it would be cheaper for us to all put down and we have longer, longer lasting, you know, long term.
And that's capital, huh?
I mean, you got fifty years of that carpet probably. How long's that been, I think?
It got put in when we moved from Joe's office, so I was working here then, so I'd say two thousand and one or two thousand and two, we moved out back.
It doesn't owe you any.
Carpet's been for five years.
So you got twenty out of it, so.
Since twenty seventeen, and it's just every, I think the five thousand was originally, and twenty seventeen was just something like that, so we're now, we've managed to get another five thousand, which is, it's fine, it's just.
I, I think you'd be a lot happier with laminate, much easier to clean, much easier to, you know, I, but that's. We're still not saying we're gonna spend it.
Yeah, I said, I'm just remembering, I don't pass with the just.
I just, I just wanted to, I just.
Carpet tiles.
Carpet squares, they seem to be very nice and versatile.
I'm just wondering if we oughta get a, get some, some sort of an estimate, so we're, we know exactly what we're talking about. And, and what would work for us the best. Carpet versus laminate or, or something even else, I don't know. You know, try to get it so, so if this carpet lasted twenty years, maybe we could get a commercial laminate. And get, um, thirty or forty years out of that.
Well, I won't.
There'll be nobody here in this room that'll prove it.
No, I would agree, whatever we can get out of it.
Just that, and then our, uh, our porch has been hit a couple times. We seem to have one guy who used to work here with the dump, he also catch it with a dump truck, we have to straighten it, and the front porch is failing and propped up. If you looked at it, it's not real healthy.
Have to take a peek at it.
And I didn't add, didn't add cars in there, I don't know what you were looking for in the capital budget. We want more with others about cars or to be an expense that you need.
I agree.
So we kind of, we do reserve funding and.
That's right, yeah, I agree.
And most everything right now works to date with grant funding, that we've got just about everything we need.
Okay. Um, ARPA discussion? There's a list that Joe provided.
We're back to ARPA, um, second or third time, uh, we've talked. There, there is the, the list that the departments and, and other community organizations provided. I did not put the, I didn't put the handwritten things on there that we talked about last time. I figured if, if selectmen had ideas, they'd put it on their own list. But what I was hoping was that we could, uh, we could talk about making a shortlist. We need to kinda move forward, make a shortlist that the board agrees on, that these, these are the projects we feel are fundable. Um, and then, once we have a shortlist as a board, then you can go forward and start scoring them to see which ones kinda float to the top and which ones. Maybe sink out of, sink to the bottom.
In the interest of time, are you looking for board members to send you the shortlist? Or were you looking to have the discussion about the shortlist tonight? I'm just.
Uh, it's pretty extensive, I think it might be easier if just emailed me a shortlist, if every board member emailed me what their priorities were. Not necessarily off the list, but also if you have your own priorities. Um, and then we could, then I could condense them into. Yeah, into the li, into your, yeah, into the list, exactly.
That'd be, I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
It would make, it would probably be easier to.
I still think that one of the items should be paying a consideration to pay off debt, existing debt. If we're buying equipment, pay off the equipment we already.
And I, I like the idea of, of using this for infrastructure.
Yeah.
You know, even if it's to, to help offset stuff, and to help us get more grants, you know. Better towards some grants.
And the only thing on the, this one here, uh, Rutland Regional Planning sent out, uh, a, a thing on the, uh, CUD. The Otter Creek Communications Union District and on hall and they, uh, it was emailed, uh, the email I got. Came out to, from Ed Bov and folks that, that basically, and because, I, I don't know, well, that's why I. But, but I forwarded it to Joe to say, hey, look, under, could, understanding that what they, the ARPA funding. How they're going to get broadband to the last mile and get everyone, they've got a pretty good chart broken down with Fairhaven being, you know. Uh, number of roads with no cable or fiber, ten percent, but they're saying with, that we're, we're getting close. And they're looking for fifteen thousand of ARPA funding would be based on the amount of work that needs to be done, our part. They're, they've got a grant that they're matching that gets the broadband done. So it's some, and, and I think they're gonna be pushing, we have, uh, a new representative on the CUD now, so I, I think it's something.
Who hasn't been contacted?
That, that needs to be, that we should probably make sure we get on our list along with buying debt down. The other two comments were, understand at our last meeting, eighty-three thousand for the salt, salt shed.
Yeah.
And we talked quite a bit about a hundred and fifty thousand for possible grant match. I, and so I'm just trying to keep those captured, that as when we're sending our list to Joe to, 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 to see what to do there.
Yep.
Um, and I, and I'm just going, I told you that's the one I was gonna bring down and give to you. I have it electronic.
Alright, so, we'll get Joe that list, and then Joe, you can put them together.
You want, you want a specific number, or just everyone you think, we think is?
Ooh, good question.
I.
Yeah, what, I guess I would ask the board, you don't want it to be too unwieldy, but you need some kinda structure, right?
So you could also put the department on, what you've got on this list, and if there's something in that department you feel is on your list. So you know each, like what you've got already set up here, and just go through this list and where it says, like, historical society. If there's something on that, just put historical society and put what you're, what you're thinking.
Yeah, exactly right.
And that way there, you can just put them back in order again.
Right, and there's, it's one where, cause I took a pass, and, and a, a lot of them didn't make the boil down pass. I, planning commission came up with something, water department, energy, town manager, and then I, the select board themselves.
Yeah.
And then looked for projects that repeated, like website.
Right.
Uh, there were, there was some key themes, uh, redo the website, the hundred and fifty dollar grant match, the salt shed. And this, uh, projects that we already have, like town hall renovation, lighting in the park, park, the. Uh, parking ride down there and the downtown sidewalks, those are already projects that are out there, that because of COVID are overrunning their budgets. That, uh, we had all the money, the money's in place, but if you don't wanna have happen to our renovation project in Town Hall that we came back and said. We have to take this out, we have to take this out because of the COVID and the cost of money and everything, those. That's the, you look for some themes, and that's all I think he's, he's looking for from us.
Existing projects. Alright, we'll get those to you, Joe. Um, new business, fireworks permit approval. Welcome back.
So, a few months ago, the board, uh, developed a, uh, permit for, for folks who wish to sell, who wish to sell fireworks. Not to shoot fireworks. This is if you wish to sell fireworks, yes. Um, so CNC, they, they waited patiently, they filled out their paperwork. Um, they have provided the, um, thousand dollar fee. They have provided their insurance with the town of Fairhaven, uh, as an insured, and they've also received their zoning permit. All that remains is the board's selection to approve their permit, uh, with hopefully a, a date of May first to begin.
So you're looking for a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the permit, fireworks permit.
I'm gonna second that motion.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Rich, to approve the fireworks permit.
Quick question, where is it gonna be?
Uh, right across from exit one, early, um, Prospect Street?
Yep.
In front of the log cabin there?
Uh, the log cabin will be, um, far to the left, it'll just straight down the driveway. There is a building, it'll be behind where I put the containers, but that's the grave.
The porch probably.
Yep, porch, yes.
Great.
Okay, question, other questions? And I know, I, we wanna, I wanna thank you, I mean, the last board, we, we met with you multiple, multiple times.
We beat it right to death, we beat it right to death.
I had hair when I started.
But we did, we worked the process, we, you know, we got it worked out and.
I appreciate it, thank you guys, uh, I'm looking forward to going to work.
Yeah, we wish you luck.
Again, I hope that the town, um, if there's some kinda website or, uh, would be happy to put us on there as a business.
Alright, um.
Thank you guys.
All favor the motion?
Alright.
Yeah, motion carries.
Joe, if you could just mail me a copy of that, I think that would be, I mean, unless you wanna hand me a copy right now.
I, I wish I had an extra copy, but yeah, I'll scan it and send it.
Alright, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. That's alright, that.
Eight forty-two.
What are you gonna do?
Um, coin drop requests.
So it's that time of year again? Coin drop, uh, every April, the town, uh.
I got it.
The town, the town accepts, uh, applications for coin drops. Um, and then, let's see, I think it's the sixteenth is the deadline, so this is the first meeting after the deadline for coin drops. The, uh, the board can approve four organizations to have these drops. Uh, we only have four applications this year.
Makes the lottery real easy, doesn't it?
Hear who it is, who they are.
Yep, so this is, uh, back in February, SEAL sent in Castleton Community Center, uh, the Fair, Furhaven Dog Park. The Knights of Columbus, Fairhaven to Council eight-ten, um, and then the Catholic, uh, Catholic Daughters.
Good.
Okay. Well, I made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Uh, seconded by Glenn to approve the four applications for the coin drop.
With the stipulation that they, be sure that they get the, the proper signage.
Yeah, follow, follow the policy.
Follow the policy to keep, cause last time, well, I don't know which one it was, but they had no signs, they just stood out there in the road.
I'll make sure that everybody is.
Yeah, I would, I would give each one of them a copy of the policy.
Right, the policy's real clear about this signage, and they didn't take it off the list.
Yeah, I think they have to get with Dale, or not Dale, I mean, uh, with, Bill.
DPW gets.
Hit all the cones and stuff.
Can you just forward us the dates when they get selected?
I'll CC you on all the emails, yeah.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, loan a, application for water line upgrade?
Yeah, so this is, uh, we were talking about the big water line that runs under Main Street, right in front of the, the apartment blocks there. Um, this is a seventeen thousand dollar loan for the preliminary engineering. Um, and Aaron's on the phone, Aaron, Aaron, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Aaron?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
So the loan is to do the preliminary engineering for the replacement of the water main. Uh, would be from River Street down across the river, going down Main Street to Prospect Street, Prospect Street to Adams Street. Um, and that preliminary engine, engineering loan has, um, forgiveness in it from the state. So that's the reason why we're applying for this loan is to get the loan and then hopefully get the forgiveness with it as well. This is part and parcel of moving forward, replacing that water line for the fiscal year twenty-four paving. On Main Street and Prospect Street.
This is all of, this is all of Main Street? This covers all of Main Street or?
River Street, you said.
Yeah, I, I was.
Nope, they just, Main Street built from River Street, south to Prospect Street, crossing the river, of course, the bridge. And then out west, out Prospect Street to Adams Street. There's a six inch path there in line there that was, uh. Noted on the adult study of, it's seen as being due for replacement.
But what about the stuff under Main Street? That's, that's gonna be affected too. Should we be expanding this, or, or is that okay?
Yeah, that stuff is already eight inch, I, I can't give it an exact date, that was put in, but that was, uh, that's been done. Um, way more recent than that six inch that's on that section we're looking to replace.
On, on the replacement, are you gonna go back to six inch, or you're gonna up, make it bigger?
Uh, so the preliminary engineering would, uh, call that up with the, from what the study was showing, that I believe eight inch would suffice down there.
Yep.
It would, uh, serve as a, a better fit for the, uh, backup feed from the south side. Um, like in instance, these are where we got these twelve inch main on Adams Street down for an inch to a foot or. So we played in again with the Adams Street or Fifth Street, but hopefully in the near future, uh, have that edge and flag, it's. Make it a lot more secure of a water line for us to back up water to from the south side.
What about the other infrastructure that's under there, the sewer lines? And drain lines, uh, you know, any kinda, I mean, if we're gonna, if they're gonna upgrade and we're gonna, we should be. We should be looking at everything that's underneath before we, you know.
Um, Prospect Street would be the one we'd have to look at. Main Street we could look at as well, there's not very much on Main Street itself. Uh, there's only, I believe, a handful of houses that are down there are, uh, connected to that. Uh, the big line from uptown comes down Main Street hill and heads across. Uh, marble, which is part of the paving stuff, but, uh, we definitely look into all of that stuff, which, you know, part of hopefully. Getting a little bit more money in the sewer line budget for infrastructure stuff that did these lines camera then, uh, investigated. So we have what needed to be done before we do big projects.
I just like, I just like to know, be comfortable that we've got decent stuff underneath and that we're not dealing with anything old. And we're not dealing with anything that, uh, is gonna bite us, because.
Agreed.
As soon as you pave something, you dig it up, you know, like, I'd like not to at least have the fourth out to, had looked first. That's all.
So my only question is, do we have money to pay for it out of reserve funds, or do we have to take the loan? And how confident are you that it'll be, uh, forgiven?
Uh, very confident, so that's, uh, A and E's been working on the application, it's, uh, it's up to fifty percent forgiveness. So we had kicked the idea around of asking the board, hey, can we just do this with some ARPA funds? Uh, because you have the cash and it makes it faster if you do it with your own money. But it didn't make a lot of sense, uh, you know, as tight as money is, to say we're gonna pay for all of it when we could get a loan and then only pay for half of it. Up to half of it. Uh, if you remember what we did with the wa, wastewater plant, um, we got as much grant money as we could get out of that. Like three, three pumps up to a million, so it was half the project.
So, so if you get the loan and get fifty percent forgiveness, could we then pay off the loan in one?
I don't see why we couldn't.
Okay, that's, so that's.
That makes sense.
Okay, so you're looking to move forward with that, with a motion from the board?
I would need a motion and then to sign the actual application.
And, and is it for the chair to sign, or the?
It's for everybody.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we put in, uh, sign the loan application for the water line upgrade.
On Main Street.
On Main Street, going south.
From River to Adams.
River to Adams, huh?
I think so. Motion by Glenn, then seconded by, um, Jay. Discussion on the motion?
I think this is another eight, as soon as we can. I think this is another eight, as soon as we can. You know, don't, let's not waste any time on it.
Okay. Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And thank you, Aaron, for joining us.
I could, but I'll look terrible. Um, and, um, for those who don't know, Aaron, Aaron had his vacation scheduled for this.
Thank you, Aaron, for.
And he's actually in Tennessee right now, but I, I begged and pleaded and he said he would, uh, begrudgingly come through the meeting. So thank you, Aaron, and tell your wife I apologize.
Enjoy your vacation.
I have a friend that used to bring it back every year for me.
Alright, the next item was paving plan. Joe shared some pictures with us.
And I also, on the, uh, on the table, I left Pike's estimate for, um, Furnace Fourth and Union Street.
You gotta print your name too, bud.
I can't do that.
When I was looking at the paving bit that we got from Pike. Um, no, I can't find it, but that's the same. Um, Swamp Road goes in line.
No, this is just for Furnace Fourth, Swamp, um, so Swamp has already been, I've already signed that contract, Jay.
To do the whole thing?
The whole thing, and I, I know that, uh, that might cause consternation, but, um, two years ago, we started a plan, this was an approved plan, uh, and we've been following this plan, so, um, Swamp was on the list, that's what we started with.
They gonna down, before they start paving, are they gonna down, cut the brush and do what they gotta do for shoulder work and get all that stuff straightened around before they start paving?
Yep, so a lot of that, they took care, and Aaron, you can, uh, remind me of everything, but, uh, last summer, they were prepping for this project and it didn't show up. Um, they replaced some culverts, did some ditching, did some, uh, brush cutting. I'm sure they can, uh, they'll go back and take a look, cause it has been a year since they were down there.
Yeah, Swamp Road was prepped and is ready to go. Uh, Furnace Street, um, is almost ready, what we're looking to do is schedule Pike to come in, do their grinding and give us a shim coat before they come back to finish coat it. So we have a, a level surface that is ready to actually, um, easily measure out for manholes and all our utilities, we can set them according to grade of what the finished paving would be when we're up there.
Okay, other questions, I notice, uh, are they still gonna hold this price? Aaron, do you know?
Uh, I did not see the due, there should be a date on that, that's good till, uh, that will roll, of course, with the price of fuel for sure.
Says seven days from issuance of March eighteenth.
Fourth Street, I know Fourth Street was asked for, um, to be checked for, it is not on this year's current paving. Uh, so Swamp Road is gonna be paved before July first as part of this current fiscal year's paving money. Next fiscal year, July first of this year, we were planned to do Furnace and Union. And then the remainder of money left over from those two, after those two streets are done, would be held until spring of twenty-three to Scotch, to start Scotch Hills project. Of course, and then we get the class two grant, which, um, we're all gonna shoo in, is what we've heard. Um, so Scotch Hill would start next spring with the remainder of this coming fiscal year's budget money, which is, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand plus fifty thousand that we have, uh, from voter allocation. Hopefully, plus the grant funds of two hundred thousand dollars for the class two. And then to finish that project, we will need the fiscal year, two years out, to finish the complete project of doing all of that road up there. Uh, that had been the plan that was, um, discussed between Nate Saster, Joe and myself.
And have you, that, up there on Scotch Hill, you've already replaced some culverts and, uh, cut brush, right? In, in preparation for?
There's a lot of brush cutting that's gotta be done.
There's, there's still a bunch of work to be done, but yes, there's been, uh, I think, two rounds of MRGP grant money that we'd use to get a lot of work done there. Uh, there is still quite a bit, there's one culvert for sure that needs to be, uh, replaced. Two, uh, culverts, uh, bigger culverts have some head wall issues that need to be addressed and, of course, a lot of ditching, a lot of brush work.
Now.
So, you're, you are going to do Fourth Street this year, right?
Fourth Street was, is not on, was not on the plan, the only thing on, uh, Fourth Street that was written into the plan till the last year would have been patching the, uh, pavement, um, in spots where it's been bad, um, due to the, uh, stormwater, pro, uh, stormwater stuff and the, as well, uh, sidewalk, all of that patching area, trying to patch that in better than what it had been.
It says on the Pike thing here, Aaron, that Fourth Street's gonna get a shim, are you saying they're not gonna shim it?
So that price was in preparation than, that from the meetings that I've heard, was that Fourth Street, um, was under, uh, the select board's, uh, eyes to be done. So I just wanted to present you guys the price of whatever it costs to have that road. Uh, so what to do is I grind it down and put two inches of asphalt back, one inch of shim, one inch of top.
Well, because my question would have been, we waited over six years to get Scotch Hill because it's class two. My understanding is Fourth Street is a class two. So we, we, I thought we were going to go out shim Fourth Street this year because it's pretty bad. But, uh, we need to get a class two grant to really fix Fourth Street, which is all the grinding and, and pavement, is that? Am I speaking correctly or am I off base, Aaron?
So, a class two paving pro, money would definitely help a lot then. I believe the road we could fund ourselves, um, the problem is, is if we're already scheduling to use our money for the next two fiscal years on Scotch Hill alone, um, that road will not be touched unfortunately for upwards of two and a half years at this point.
You can't let Fourth Street go two and a half years.
Four, Fourth Street is already all just a mess from one end to the other, and four years more of a mess and patching. It is not, it is not a.
But can I, can I say something?
Yeah, Aaron, hold on a second, Rich.
I need to, I need to, I need to clarify something on Fourth Street. I, I, I'm a firm believer, if we could get up there and, and take them shoulders down and get them water, let a lot, let an awful lot of that water run back into the catch basin. There's catch basins up there that are covered right over with sod and mud. As I've looked at them every day, and if we can get them cut back down and get some of the water to back off. And then if we could shim that road up, I think you'd probably get a couple of years out of it while we're getting the money to do a good paving job.
I agree.
Uh, but until, until them sides are cut down so that water can run into them catch DIs, where you're just, uh, you're just shoveling, shoveling tide water and you're not gonna get anywhere. That's my opinion. And, and there's a ton of, a ton of work on there, just, they could be done with, with, uh, grader and, uh,
Excavator.
excavator and, uh, and, uh, you know, get it down. But there's a lot of issues with buildup down through there, there's a stump that's, a rotten stump that's right there, the whole area could be taken down. I don't know what you'd have to do with the property owners, maybe they would be in agreement to really shape it really nice or could be mowed proper. There's, there's one area there that's, that'll walk, the shoulder line and something right up would build up. It's, there's a lot of, a lot of prep work there. And I think if that could get done and then a shim, we'd be way better off. And, and by the way, I, I wanna congratulate you on Green Road, that, that ditching is coming along very nicely out there.
Second.
Yeah, Aaron, I didn't mean to cut you out before, did you have? Before Rich started?
Yep, so, there was, what basically it breaks down to is where do we wanna work first then? Because both roads, as I said, will take, uh, so if we go to Fourth Street, even doing a shim on that, it's gonna take away, uh, you can take that number from Pike and try to cut it in half for what that work's gonna be up there. Um, so we'll use, uh, to do Union Fourth, sorry, Union, Furnace and Fourth, uh, with no grind, you're still talking almost all of this current year's budget money, uh, maybe minus the fifty thousand, that's what we have this year. Um, just to do that project, so now we'll go into sprint of twenty-three with no money left over to start the paving on Scotch Hill. So we're pushing that up another year. Um, Scotch Hill, I, I agree is bad as well, so we're gonna push that another year and that road won't be able to be completed for another year and a half, two years, so, um, it, it comes down to making a decision of what road we're leaving and which road we're going after.
Well, it was my understanding that we weren't going to do all the san, uh, all Swamp Road. We were gonna do from the culvert, the Prospect. And the rest of the, that money there was taken care of Fourth Street, that was my, that was my understanding. And now you're gonna do all the Swamp Road.
Hang on, so originally all of, Swamp was one, one and a half miles long, originally Swamp was slated for complete paving. Um, last year, in an attempt to, uh, save a little bit of cash and save some of that road, we were just gonna do the bad, the bad spots. Uh, moving into this year and taking a look at it, it's, I didn't realize it was as bad as it is either, but, uh, I drove it and it, there's, we would just have another Scotch Hill if we didn't take care of it this year.
But you gotta do the same thing with Fourth Street, we're gonna go missing, you can't go, you can't go two more years without touching Fourth Street.
Fourth is worse than Swamp. In my opinion, and gets more traffic, and gets more traffic.
So we could put back, so you're, the class two grant is good for two years, you could just bump it back two years, and then you have two o, other fiscal years worth of paving plus a grant to do it. But like Aaron said, it depends on where you wanna spend your money first.
Well, I just feel that with the school up there at Fourth Street, the amount of traffic that's up and down, you can't go down Fourth Street with a bus unless you drive out in the middle of the road. That's how bad it is. And it's gonna cause an accident, cause somebody's gonna swerve and win them things, and you're gonna hit a car.
What if we, what if we done half of Swamp Road and done Fourth Street?
Swamp Road contract is already signed.
Yes.
And this is.
Swamp, if, any pulling back from Swamp Road, we're gonna result in the same mess we're in right now. Except we're gonna have to add Swamp to the list of good, good roads that we let go, right now it's still savable. Um, the hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we're looking to spend on this year is good money on a good road. Um, we spent a hundred and thirty on either Fourth or Scotch Hill, that's good money on a bad road. So the, the best way now is keeping your roads are good money on good roads and catch the bad ones when you can, so.
What are you gonna do, what are you gonna do with all the cracked pavement that's on Swamp Road? You're gonna pave where the cracked pavement and the cracks are just gonna come back.
So Swamp Road's scheduled for a half inch shim and a one inch top, and an inch and a half is the minimum the state, uh, recognizes as being a structural, um, met, uh, structural, uh, paving plan.
But the cracks are gonna come back.
The only way we, way we'd ever crack is if we were to go through that road and replan the whole thing, which was done two projects ago.
Yep, right then.
Is there any consideration being here to move the road away from the guard hole on Scotch Hill Road? You got a road right here and you got a corner ten foot drop and the road actually hits undercutting, according to, of, 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 of customer.
Right now, we're not doing Scotch Hill. Which is kinda upsetting.
That, that bank is on the other corner, it's sinking down everywhere.
That's solid slate there, John.
Uh, to me, this is more, another list for the ARPA funds.
I was gonna say, in order to get forth, can they, Aaron, if we had the funds, could we do the shimming on for whether ARPA or s, some other dollars?
Yes, that's, the, and again, cause then I just need, uh, more money to be able to catch up on these roads and that, um, right now would be the perfect time to, um, use something like that to try and catch something that can get us farther in, you know, caught up on the game than where we're at right now.
About how much more would that be, I'm just trying to.
I think he said about half of them.
Yeah, he said it'd be about forty thousand dollars, cause it was eighty.
Forty thousand?
Ninety-four, he said about half.
Ninety-four, it'd be, it'd be forty-five thousand.
Just to shim or are we going to?
If you're gonna just shim Fourth Street, it'd be forty, about forty-five thousand, correct?
What we run into for problems up there is we do need to take some asphalt down because we have curb reveals that, um, we aren't quite meeting the standard now, and if we keep going up with asphalt, not taking it back down, we're gonna, you know, totally not meet the standard. Um, curb reveal's supposed to be somewhere around seven inches. So, and all that new sidewalk up there has, uh, a bunch of curbing on it, which, uh, if we keep going up with asphalt, we're gonna take that clearance to nowhere near seven.
Yeah, on the opposite side of that Fourth Street from that curbing though is where the area is where it's all, this, the bank is all built up and the water is just kicking right out into the road. And there's no way to get to them DIs there on that side. There's, could we get them, could we get that chopped down some and then a good shim on there? That's, that's kinda what I'm thinking.
Just to shim on that, on the, uh, Westbound lane?
Yes, that's, that's the worst, yes.
It's a south pole, so it's the worst up the upper end.
Well, I was just gonna say, when you start talking one lane and the other, that, that whole road, uh, in bo, both sides in different places, it's a disaster.
A shim would help it.
I don't disagree, a, and, and I, I agree with Aaron as far as Swamp Road. It, it's basically a good structure there now. And, and a, and a pave will last for a long time, as long as the shoulders are gotten maintained properly. Um, but, and I also agree with you fellow, Fourth Street is horrible, and we have to do something with that street.
So do you want to do the same thing we asked Mike to do, have Aaron do, get pricing for Fourth Street? The, the minimum.
So, so we know what to take, where to get the funds?
The minimum for Fourth Street to get us by to when we can actually address it.
I, I feel if they just get the shoulders, put that, that, like, where you put the drainage in, once again, our buddy's rotten, never took care of it right, but, um, get those, so, the center of the road isn't that bad, I mean, they can patch, but the holes are in the center of the road. But if they come out about three or four feet on each side and, and get those places where it's bad, I think it, we'd get by two more years, I think. But, but Rich said, we gotta cut that other side down a little bit.
So Joe, do you and Aaron wanna come up with a plan, and, for that?
For?
Fourth Street?
Yes.
And then we can discuss funding, whether it's an ARPA fund, I don't know.
Go ahead and do what you're do, do what, what you were planning, but try to figure it forth and we'll.
Be with them up there, think what I'm thinking and.
Yep, that's.
And, uh, give them some ideas.
Okay, so, uh, just to, just to make sure I got the right idea, um, move forward with Furnace and Union, bring back information, um, I'll bring back, I'll bring back a few ideas for Fourth, what that looks like for, for grinding and paving and then just, um, shimming those sides, so that way you have some options. Does that work for the board?
Yeah.
And does that include what you were talking about, Rich, of bringing the?
Well, that would be our, that would be our, our work and that should, we can do that.
Okay.
We definitely gotta get that, the sides clipped, clipped down so that water can stay off the highway instead of driving in the water.
So the board's fine moving forward with Aaron and Joe's plan excluding Fourth Street for the mo, time being, and then hopefully we can find some funding to do.
Yeah, that keeps, that keeps, uh, that keeps Scotch Hill on for Spring of Twenty-three.
Right.
Cause that's about as Fourth Street, it's just-
Yeah.
Yeah.
But these, these, this is already, these are already signed contracts, so.
Uh, Fourth, Furnace and Union is not.
Oh, okay, so, so the only contract signed is Swamp Road.
Swamp Road, yeah.
Now, are they gonna do Furnace and Union when they do Swamp Road? Or are they coming back in?
No, we want them to do it all in one go.
And we're gonna have to pay extra bringing it back in for Fourth Street, so we gotta get something planned on Fourth Street.
Yeah, it would be nice to get it all in one.
So, so we can get it done if that means reaching out like we did in Salt Shed, we reach out and spend the money, right?
Okay.
Okay, you'll break some numbers.
Anything else on paving? Pretty good?
Nope, good discussion.
Uh, dog hearing?
So, we originally were going to try to schedule a hearing.
Thank you, Chair.
We're just gonna try to schedule a hearing, we have an ongoing dog issue on Scotch Hill. We've issued multiple tickets, the tickets were scheduled for December, had to get pushed back till last week. Three of them showed up, there's two more, the judge wanted all five of them, so currently, I don't wanna go into details, because you guys are in the hearing, I can't go into details. The judge got to hear one ticket, it took an hour and fifteen minutes. They're going to reschedule a block of just an hour, hour and a half for the rest of the tickets. Both parties are adamant, they'd like a hearing in front of the select board over the dog. It's a nuisance dog, it's not vicious, it just doesn't stop barking. We have not remedied with tickets, so we're looking at a hearing tonight, and I said with the agenda you have, and my thought with the one ticket, it took an hour and fifteen minutes, I wanted to present it to you guys. Do you wanna schedule a hearing prior to a select board meeting, a special night? I know I don't wanna get you in here anymore than that, but I didn't wanna do something that you guys spend enough time here. So I didn't know how you, how do you guys want to proceed with it?
What's, what's the urgency for, I, I take it they wanted this resolved yesterday? Is there urgency that says we pick a day next week and set a couple hours aside?
It's been since last August, and it's-
Okay.
It got better and then it escalated worse to the point where we started writing ticket after ticket after ticket. Again, the judge got through one, we still have a few pending in judicial side of it, but it doesn't seem to be both parties want the select board to make some type of decision. I don't think anybody's looking for the dog to be taken out of town, but, and I was kinda, we wanted to do it at the last board, and then it was the board, we're just gonna change, and I said, well, it's not a bad thing, because I think Bob was here during one before, and I was picking on you, but it was like, you already have that, the knowledge on-
Oh, boy.
Don't worry about it. So the dog just doesn't wanna stop, stop barking, and then they're not, they're not willing to put on-
I can't go into any details of it, because you guys will be the-
Right, we would be the-
We've gotta be the neutral party currently, so.
There's two sides to both stories, and again, we got through one ticket, there's four more pending from the judicial hearing, and I wanted to put off till they were all done through there, but I don't know, I thought they were all gonna be done the other day, and both parties want some type of resolution on it. So I didn't know how you guys felt about, if you did it an hour ahead or something, but I don't think, and if you have a heavy agenda, we'd still be where we'd be right now.
I don't know, it doesn't matter to me.
It can be two weeks, it can be four weeks, long week.
Do you wanna, do you wanna meet at six o'clock, or do you wanna meet like an, like an off week?
An off week might be better.
And just have one topic, the dog being, come in, like, do we have an, for a special meeting so many days? We often give notice?
We do. Seven days.
Yeah, it's only seven, and the police have to warn their parties as well.
So it's seven days, what would that be if we went out yesterday, if we go out and give notice tomorrow?
Yeah, you won't be able to meet next Tuesday.
Can't meet next Tuesday because you don't have the time?
It can be, it's something, I mean-
Three weeks?
I think that would be fine, as long as both parties know that you guys have a date that you're looking at.
So what do we now, we're the nineteenth?
So that would put us where?
Seventeenth of May, is that the off week?
Well, I, I see it's got-
Seventeenth, we have a meeting.
Seventeenth we have a meeting, it would be, even though the tenth is, is got a square around it.
Yeah, no, that's what I was trying to see with the-
I accidentally marked that wrong, you have one on the third, the seventeenth, and the twenty-fourth, sorry.
Okay, so the tenth-
I was reading it wrong.
And, and the tenth and seven o'clock work everyone, for, for everyone on the board, that time works best for you?
Can't wait.
So we, tenth, seven o'clock, we do a special meeting, May tenth?
The off Tuesday?
Yep, the off Tuesday.
We've tried to revolve without coming here for six, eight months.
Okay, all right, so make notification, I guess, with what you need to do for-
I'll take care of that notice.
May tenth, seven?
Sounds good.
Seven or six?
Let's do it at six.
Six P M?
Six P M is fine, six is good for me.
May tenth, correct?
May tenth at six o'clock.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Liquor license approvals, we got a list in there.
Good, uh-
Mike, thank you.
Okay. I have a cheat sheet to fill, I bet I do. Okay, are you ready for the lic, for the motions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to approve a first-class liquor license for the Laramias Family Enterprises DBA Fairhaven Inn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay, questions on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
And then now, I'll do them all, and then we'll sign them. Motion to approve first-class liquor license to the American Legion Fairhaven Post Forty-nine?
Is there a second? Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob, questions on that one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion to approve a first-class liquor license to the Eagles Fairhaven Aerie Three Nine Zero Seven F O E Inc.
Second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay?
Aye.
Here, remember, right?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Now, these are second-class liquor licenses. Motion to approve a second-class liquor license for the Laramias Family Enterprises DBA Fairhaven Inn.
Is there a second? Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion to approve a second-class liquor license for the American Legion Fairhaven Post Forty-nine?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion to approve a second-class liquor license for the Eagles Fairhaven Aerie Three Nine Zero Seven F O E Inc.
Second? Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Rich, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Right down here.
There's one more.
You got one more?
What's, what's the other one, what's the other one that we?
No, there's three on my paper.
No, this one, this one, we just did the Fairhaven Aerie, first and second.
Yeah, first and second, there should be six total.
Oh, I didn't put it on there, that's an outside, that's an outside consumption for the Eagles.
Okay, motion to approve an outside consumption permit for the Eagles Fairhaven Aerie Three Nine Zero Seven F O E Inc.
Second. Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay, questions on that one, just?
No, good, they would, they would quiet, right?
They have been so far, yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, now we can start the song. And this must be page two.
Are there two on this, or just one on this one, maybe that's the outside consumption, I think.
Yeah, one single page for outside consumption.
I'm just gonna make the file here and send them all back together. What we got here?
I have to get one for Post Forty-seven?
Post Forty-seven?
That's just before, is that, is that Jay's house or yours, right, before you get to Post Forty-nine?
That's at my garage. All right. Planning Commission, you need a letter of support?
Uh, Rutland Regional Planning, yes.
Yep.
Uh, so this is, we're, we're still moving through the process to try to get what they call Bridge for the Adam Street Bridge on the state list for replacement, as part of that process, it's going through Rutland Regional's scoring rubric, and they would, they need a letter, Rutland Regional needs a letter from the Board of Selectmen supporting this project.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we sign a letter of support for the Adam Street Bridge to the, support the Adam Street Bridge for the town of Fairhaven, to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob, to send a letter of support?
Yes, through, for the project.
Okay, any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries? Uh, parking lot? Anything on there?
No, it's just on the purchasing policy update, that's just, you're gonna go through the financial policies one at a time, and the purchasing is the first one?
Yep, so we-
You're gonna do?
Yeah, we were updating all of our policies, but we bumped that one to the front just because of, with ARPA in place, yeah, they wanna see our-
So when we do that one, then we'll do another financial policy until we get through them, that's, that's, that's fine.
Okay, are there questions? Uh, board roundtable? Buddy for roundtable? Rich?
No, I don't really have it. Again, we gotta do the drainage before we pave, and, and up on Green Road, they've done a great job up there. I was up there the other day, and thought they'd done wonderful. You know, so there's more to do, but at least we're going in the right direction.
Okay, Jay?
Got a call today, this, this won't be a problem again until next year, but the person called and complained because the bus stop, the information booth, or whatever you wanna call it, wasn't plowed out from the last two storms, so people were falling going up the ramp, so they would like to see, I said to him, I said, we don't have to worry about that until next year, but he was all up in arms about it.
But you had to worry about it today.
Yeah, and then the other thing I got today was the water bills. He claims that the town is sending water bills out for sixty-four cents, for somebody didn't have, didn't pay a bill, or there's interest or something.
You, you possibly, yeah.
I just told him that it's on a computer-type system, it just automatically takes it out. They're not gonna shut the water out for sixty-four cents.
Oh, certainly not, no.
You know, and that's why I tried to explain to him, he was all up in there, well, I've got one here, he said it was for twelve cents the last quarter, and I said, well, bring them, bring it in and show, and they, if it's a mistake, they'll take care of it, that's not a big deal, I mean, you know. And then, one other request, and you can tell who this is coming from, the itty-bitty committee, is there any chance that they can get some funds toward, to help them with expenses for their Friday night events? I don't think they want a lot, I think they're looking at a couple hundred bucks or something like that.
So I, I think, well, we do have eighty or ninety dollars in the kitty from our previous events. We were selling hot dogs as a way to generate revenue, and we did okay, but the budget is so tight right now, it's, last meeting we were over budget, and by freezing the budget, we're back on track, but what we've done in the past, and, and I'm not bragging, I'm just saying, folks like myself who were part of it did, didn't contribute, so I bought the, I bought the band last time we had a band, which I'm happy to do again, I love those, I love the events, yeah.
Well, they just, you know, they just feeling that they've got something rolling for Friday nights. I guess the thing is, if they got into a jam, they're just wondering if they could possibly get some help.
I will make sure they have the money.
Okay.
And, and didn't we, at our Economic Development Committee meeting, Judy was talking that, and we said that if they get in a jam, you know, the, the budget that the E D C has, say, let us know, because that helps our economic development, so-
There's a lot of, there's something there, so they, they can get something.
And, and that's when Joe had some money left over, gave, gave him some money to walk away with, I, I'm pretty sure they had money in their pockets.
There, there's twenty-eight hundred dollars in the E D C.
Bill, go ahead.
Did you, anybody see Scotch Hills doing food trucks on Friday?
I saw that post there.
Just thought if you guys were doing something on fries, and next one, when Kindred Way was there, we kinda partnered with them on Friday night, music, and maybe we can play out there.
They, I heard that they're gonna park the food truck in front of the Kindred Way, I would think it'd be better off on the side.
Or out in the middle, probably.
Yeah, something because, because of the fact that, but let's not take up the parking from, you know, if they, if they got something going on, that's all, you know.
Um, anything else?
That's it for me.
Uh, just, just info for the hydro grant that, that Joe mentioned earlier. We put together a very hastily, put together because we had to have a letter of intent in by midnight tonight, so I got some notes to Joe from the, from the Energy Committee, and we sent it out. It, it's, it's really specific to what the hydro plant would need, but it's, uh, you know, everybody and their brother will be applying for that grant, so there was no reason not to ask for all, which was two million dollars, and the, what we wrote in the grant, I don't know how you finally worded it, but my wording was that we wouldn't spend any money received until we had a decent bond issue, and, you know, so, so the chances, you know, there's a lot of chance of not getting it, but that's what that was all about. I'd, I'd like to understand better, and I didn't wanna fight that battle tonight too much, but I'd like to understand better how someone can work on the, work forty hours in ten, in four days, Danny, and, and then still be a lister and work X amount of hours there. I don't want her to work Saturday and Sunday, I don't think that's reasonable to ask, and I, I, I would just very much like to, to know how that is supposed to work. So, I mean, I, if she can pull it off, fine, but there doesn't seem to be, there doesn't seem to be the way to do that in a regular workday, work week, particularly in a four-day schedule which you, is adamant you want. So I, and I, they're both, they're both elected, elected positions, so here we go again, but I, I really wanna know how that works, and, and I don't, I mean, we, we obviously don't have them punch in, we don't, you know, and, and I would be- And I, and I don't, I mean, we, we obviously don't have them punch in, we don't, you know, and, and I would be I don't know, I, I, I don't see that, and I don't, I don't think we get good if somebody's working forty hours and then working another X amount of hours, I don't know how many, I don't know what they average a week. I, I, I guess I could look, but uh, it just seems like a lot of work, I don't want her to, you know, I don't want her to be sloppy and need a job, cause she's overworked and overtired, so.
Okay. Uh, anything else, Bill?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Alright, Glenn, what do you have?
I, I only had one question, and that is, with all the rain, it's the best time to keep dust out when you're doing uh curb sweeping out here. I know they're busy with the uh putting the culverts and everything on Green Road, but uh, just a question around, that came out. When we gonna start during the, the sweeping, cause we wait too long.
So, I thought they started, they have been out sweeping. Yeah, I've seen them out sweeping.
Okay.
Not completely, I don't think, but they have been out.
Okay, so there's, just didn't wanna get into uh issue with the dust storm. With what we have out there, that's all, no, that's good.
Okay. Um, review of expenditure reports, revenue reports, do we have motion for the warrant?
Make a motion to pay the payroll warrant of thirty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Jay for the payroll warrant. Um, questions on that? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'll abstain.
Okay, motion carries with one abstentions, um, but the general fund?
Motion to pay the general warrant of a hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and one dollars and nineteen cents.
Um, I'll second that, but there's two different, there's two things in your, what they paid, Blue Cross Blue Shield was a big one. And uh, I think the other one was the town hall, no, water treatment plant, fifty thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars. The Blue Cross was fourteen thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents.
Those two items are more than half.
Yeah, yeah.
So, motion by Bob, second by Jay, um, other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, uh, motion carries, uh, with one abstention.
And checkbook status as of tonight is five, five hundred and five thousand four hundred and six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Okay. Okay, we've got three executive sessions on the list here, which one do you wanna do first? Wanna do?
Let's get John, go home.
Go home, go to bed.
Can I make the, all three motions and then we'll do John's first?
Sure.
Make a motion uh to go into executive session for uh, with the health and safety officer to discuss an issue. Um, I don't know what the one V S A is, we'll add that.
It's a legal issue and.
Yeah, V S A three one three A one.
Okay, so it's the same. Uh, V S A three one three A one, also to go into executive session for labor relations agreement under that same V S A three thirteen A one, and a personnel discussion under V S A three thirteen A three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Glenn, second by Jay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.